Welcome, I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council Study Session of Thursday, January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is three oh three. And we've already put on our website how to join this meeting. So I'd like to call to order, roll call would be Councilmember Abersold.
Here.
Councilmember Dinson.
Here.
Councilmember Franch.
Here.
Councilmember Heinz.
Here.
Councilmember Markley.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
This is Mayor Keen. We have from staff, City Administrator Bob Larson.
Here.
Public Works Director Jeff Langhelm.
Here.
City Clerk Molly Townsley.
We're trying to bring her back in, Mayor. She was on the public side.
Molly's here. We just can't bring her up for some reason.
Okay. Assistant City Clerk Josh Decker.
Here.
And our consultant from David O Consulting Group, Steve, sorry, Steve Robert.
Here.
And then we go back to City Administrator, I'm sorry, City Clerk Molly Townsley. Okay, well, we know she's here. So with that, we're discussion is commercial fishing home port feasibility study at Anseach Waterfront Park, which we had actually already sent over many, many months ago to the council. We have a staff review of the study will be our first topic, and then the council discussion, participant comments, and then the next steps. And with that, I would turn it over to Jeff Langhelm.
Thank you, Mayor. Afternoon, Council. Yeah, today we're going to review the feasibility study that the council received back in the beginning of October of this year related to the Antage Commercial Fishing Homeport feasibility discussion that's been taking place for over a year now. The study was initiated in March, spring, late winter, early spring of two thousand and twenty, and was concluded at the September of two thousand and twenty. And then the intent was to have time for the public and council and the stakeholders to review the study. And then we've have finally been able to come together, we're using a Zoom meeting platform in as good a way as we can to be able to interact back and forth with both council and the stakeholders. So we think we have this Zoom meeting platform working well, and so we're here tonight, this afternoon, to review the study with Steve Robert from David O Consulting, who's the author. And then the council can ask questions of David O Consultant. They can also ask questions of the stakeholders because we've notified the stakeholders of this meeting and asked them to participate. So that's one of the many attendees is that group of stakeholders that you will be talking about. The public is definitely welcome to listen as they are in any council study session. Though the public would have their opportunity to speak, not necessarily at this study session, but instead, the public, general public can provide their input to council at a yet-to-be-determined council meeting. So when this topic comes back to council, February or March, likely, the council or the public can provide their input to council at that point. And so when we get to item C on the agenda that Mayor just referenced, the intent was to only have the study stakeholders participate in that part of the discussion. So with that, I'm going to jump into just starting a quick review. Looks like we have a question, Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, so Jeff, this is informational only. You won't be looking for any decision making today?
Correct. We're going to bring this back to council at a later date, like I said, hopefully by February or March, and we'll be asking council to make a decision at that point, but it's based on the outcome of today's meeting. Yeah.
Very good. I think that's appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. So Steve, do you have the slideshow ready to go? I have it also.
Yes, I do. Would you like me to start sharing?
Yeah, if you can just start with that first, just the intro slide, we'll get into the first topic here real quick. So yeah, so I'm going to just give this quick intro, and then I'm going to hand it off to Steve here. One of the first things I wanted to talk about is how all of this came about. And that is directly related to Resolution nine four nine. So this is a resolution we've talked about for quite a long time. Resolution nine four nine was the result of a public visioning process by the Parks Commission for Anseach Waterfront Park. That visioning process was authorized by council in February of two thousand and thirteen. The intent of the visioning was to develop a shared vision for the use of the property that at that point had not yet been named, but eventually was named Anseach Waterfront Park. The Parks Commission eventually held an open house in November of two thousand and thirteen and based on their visiting process, and then made a recommendation to city council. And that recommendation was comprised within Resolution nine four nine. And so what you have up here on the screen right now is at the very end of Resolution nine four nine, it shows the list of the highest priorities. Or shows a list of the priorities for Anseach Park. And I just wanted to focus on the highest priorities, those that had a community-wide priority of undermet needs as one, which the Parks Commission listed as high. So those, as you can see, I'm just going to read them to you, but you can see them on the screen, those included, and this is in no particular order that I'm reading them, but it's just top to bottom, active net shed for commercial fishing, commercial fishing fleet mortgage, human-powered craft storage and lockers, preservation of the net shed, and recognition of historic working waterfront. So that's how we embarked upon this journey that we've been on for many years now. From that, it was, it developed Anseach Waterfront Park, the phases into phases that we've been working on, as council is well aware of. And then there was a strong interest to have a discussion about commercial fishing fleet access and future float systems. And council, previous council had discussed that and said, let's get together and put together a study. And with that, I'm going to hand that off to Steve Robert now because he's going to go through the study itself, including the purpose.
Sure. Thanks, Jeff. Can everyone hear me? Sorry, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. We embarked upon this study about a year and a half ago. And really, the purpose was to right-size a facility potentially for the fishermen at Anseach Park to house the historic fleet and give a home port for them. The first step that we took was to engage the fleet and the community with the help of the city staff. We reached out to the people that you see on the screen to ask a number of questions preliminarily to inform us as third-party consultants to make, to further make decisions as we got about our work, to know about this site, to know how the views should be protected, to get information about the fleet, what the boat sizes are, what they're fishing for, and how they should be accommodated. Once we got that preliminary information, we developed five alternatives with the help of the city. These were just really rough sketches for the five to just really throw concepts against the wall and see what could happen at the site. Alternatives A and E really came to the forefront. Alternative A is kind of what we like to call the maximum build-out of this facility. It's sort of like the maximum marina that the site could accommodate. And I will show that. This is alternative A. Kind of a standard marina layout with slips on the south side, using the site as it sort of flares out to accommodate larger vessels at the waterward part of the site and side tie along the northern property line. Alternative E being a, what we heard from the community, to be more of a historically informed layout with a linear dock allowing side tie of various fishing boats accommodated as they come in. The other three alternatives, as I'm kind of skipping over, were the way that we got there. Alternative B being an iteration of alternative A, slightly a different orientation. Alternative C being a very minimalistic build-out of just a mixed-use facility of only an eighty linear foot dock of mixed use. And combination D being both a marina and a kayak facility accommodated off that northern pier. If any further information, if you would like to discuss any of those alternatives B, C, and D further, I encourage that later on, but I'm skipping over that because they were really eliminated from consideration early on because of feedback from fishermen and the neighbors. So what's very important to communicate is that from the fishermen and the neighbors and those who have stake in this historic working waterfront, we asked them, what's important? What should we really be considering when we look at different facilities for the site? First and foremost, we heard conformance to the historic working waterfront in the Millville neighborhood. And we defined that from listening to them as maintaining the view corridor and maintaining the historic character of the working waterfront. We also heard that we should consider net cost from the cost of building the facility and from the revenue that it could expect to receive. We also heard that we should consider the mortgage capacity, the total number of boats mortared at a time equally against these other criteria. We considered the regulatory compliance difficulty, how much new overwater footprint we would be introducing, and how difficult it would be to get agencies to approve it. We were asked to look at traffic and parking, the impact that this would have to the neighborhood, trying to occupy the limited parallel parking stalls that are available in the neighborhood, and really no parking, public parking that's available in the area, and on water safety, as we're aware that the site is to be shared by human-powered watercraft clubs, the public, and this proposed fisherman marina. At the conclusion of our study, we concluded that the two different alternatives, A being the larger build-out, and alternative E, the linear moored facility, ranked the following way with the decision criteria that was identified by the consulting team and the public. The conformance to the working waterfront was ranked to be medium for the full build-out and high for the linear mortgage facility. The full build-out was found to be slightly, slightly larger than the public saw the facility to want to accommodate, and high in the linear facility, mostly because of the linear mortgage alignment, protecting the view corridor, those criteria that we laid out earlier. The net cost was laid out to be similar for both alternatives, mostly being that the larger facility and the linear facility, both, I want to point out, both necessitate an investment from the city, but equally fund the amount of mortgage respectively, so that there is a similar sunk cost for each facility. The mortgage capacity for each facility was shown to be high. The overall slip count of alternative A shown to be the highest. Alternative A, sorry, alternative E, similar if you consider the rafting capability of a linear mortgage facility. Regulatory compliance shown to be low for the full build-out, medium for linear because there's just slightly less square footage for alternative A, the linear facility. So we anticipate the permitting path forward to be just a little bit easier. Traffic and parking, we found as a team that both alternatives would have an impact on the neighborhood, really aggravating the parking and traffic situation just by a bit. It's not a large facility, but we have to admit in all honesty that both facilities would aggravate that congested area. And on water safety, we found that alternative E, the linear facility, just providing a bit more separation between the different uses, the motorized boats and the human-powered watercraft, whereas alternative A put things a little bit closer, a little bit less of a separation. And those were our findings. So with that, I would just turn it back, and I'm very available to, okay, sorry, propose additional parking. The facility, the study did look at, as I was talking about, how could the proposed facility sort of mitigate the congestion, the parking needs that are created by these additional slips? And a few different sites are really under consideration, but there's nothing really proposed at this time. Jeff, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Well, what we found from the, in the report was that we currently have along Novak some angled park, angled back-end parking, you can kind of see it in the lower right-hand portion of that image. The red line that is shown on there is an area that is in the right-of-way that is available and could accommodate more back-end angled parking. It's definitely within walking distance of the site. And so we wanted to identify that as a possible way to connect when a mortgage facility is constructed, that that could be part of the construction project to include back-end angled parking to mitigate for any parking needs the city might have associated with the commercial fishing flow. Steve, would you mind going back one slide?
Here.
Oh, no, that was to the slide that had all of the alternatives comparison. Yes, I just want to be clear, maybe I heard you wrong, but just want to be clear for council, the regulatory compliance. The, the linear facility actually has less, correction, wrong, but has less overwater coverage than the full build-out. Is that correct?
Oh, yes. If I said it differently, I misspoke. Yeah, the linear facility is a smaller facility. Being slightly easier to permit.
Yeah, slightly easier. Okay, I just want to clarify that. I might have heard that wrong. Okay. Okay, so at this point, that's what we have for a quick overarching summary of the report. We're ready to have council ask questions of both Steve and myself.
A question, should we change that one part of that regulatory compliance so it's, it's correct? Because it's low and the medium. Since there is less overwater on alternative E, would it, it looks like this slide is wrong then?
Well, the way I read the slide is that, is that for regulatory compliance, this has a higher, is higher likelihood of having regulatory compliance than alternative A. I think that was the intent.
Is that correct, Steve?
That is correct. And I probably just read it when giving my presentation. We rank the decision criteria as always higher being better. So what we mean in alternative E is that it's more likely to meet regulatory compliance. So that, so that anytime an alternative gets high, it's better, you know?
Sounds great. Thank you for clarifying that. I'll let Jeff call on people.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Wu.
Yes, do we have the separation feet between the new paddler's dock and A and E?
Do we have that dimension?
Yes.
We do. It's not identified here in the drawings. I can pull that up real quick and let you know in a minute.
That would be great. I thought I read somewhere that it was ninety feet, but I'm not sure if that was between A or E, and I'm not sure if it included the new drawing for the community paddler stock.
I think it was the old drawing, but I'll double-check that.
Thank you.
I can say the ninety feet is a minimum. If you can still see my screen here on, here on the shore side, we maintained a ninety-foot minimum for a fisherman boat turning radius. It's much larger as you reach the harbor side.
Okay, just real quick, I just did a quick measurement. The distance between the, in, between the commercial fishing home port float system and the community paddler's dock is currently under the current design about one hundred and sixty feet.
Is that for A or for E?
That's for both because it's from, I don't have control of the screen, but it's essentially on the, on the alternative you see before you. It's from the bow of boat one to the float, the finger float that you see out here. And so that bow of boat one is essentially, this is very similar. If you look at alternative A, the stern of boat one is a little further out. But what I measured was for alternative A, or sorry, I measured for alternative E.
Okay, so alternative A would be less.
No, slightly, but can you see, can you flip back to alternative A? Yeah, so the distance is, it's a forty-five-foot boat. It's shifted further out into the water. Yeah, it's probably, instead of being one hundred and sixty feet, it's probably closer to one hundred and forty-five feet.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Dinson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Langhelm. And I'm sorry, I can't see all the names on here, but the presenter. Sorry, I can't remember your last name. I just wanted to confirm that with design A, it looks like there would be eleven boats that could be accommodated, and design E would accommodate eight boats. Is that true?
That's without rafting. With alternative E, it's quite common for, at least for fishing vessels in and around this area to raft alongside each other. And while you couldn't necessarily double the capacity, because as you can see in this image, fishing vessels, six, seven, and eight along the northeast side or the west side, I don't know if we could allow them to raft and still meet the clearance to the property to the west, but you could at least have five additional vessels. So when you compare rafting of, on alternative E, you can have at least thirteen vessels here, and alternative A, I think, was eleven.
Okay, because it, I'm not in a fishing, from a fishing family, but from what I understand, there is a lot more than even thirteen boats in our current fishing fleet, and we've got some new individuals that live in Gig Harbor that would like their boats to be here as well. I think we received a document today that counted twenty-nine boats that are without Gig Harbor mortgage or are at risk of displacement. And although I think, you know, our priority obviously is taking care of the boats that are in our, you know, quote-unquote historic fleet, we want to make sure we have a robust presence here as well, so that our fishing industry can persevere into the future. It's so important to our identity and our, our culture here in Gig Harbor. So I thought, back when, even last year when we were talking about that, I thought that some of the representatives of the fishermen club had come up with a plan for more like twenty boats fitting on this pier. And if this is the max build-out, alternative A here, can you explain why we can only get, you know, ten or eleven boats where they were envisioning something closer to twenty?
I can't explain necessarily why they thought they could get twenty. I didn't see a schematic layout, scaled schematic layout from the folks who were saying that they could get twenty or more vessels here. I'd be very happy to take a look at that and see how that layout would occur. But I, we didn't come up with a way to be able to get that many vessels here that they described.
I might add, it really, it really depends on what kind of size of vessel you're considering. We have an inventory of the fleet, and they vary greatly. As you can see, we had forty-five at the minimum to eighty at the maximum, and they fall all in between. So we're showing, we're showing a certain accommodation for vessels that we sort of chose. And as you can see, we're just kind of cascading them up from forty-five to eighty. If they were all smaller, you could definitely afford more vessels here.
Well, I'll just make one more comment to that point, that when we get to the point where we're actually designing it before we pay engineers to do that, I think we really need to engage the fishing community because I understand some of the newer fishermen and women bringing boats in, the boats, I guess the newer boats are a lot bigger and wider, and we just want to make sure that we are building something that is going to be useful into the future to make sure that our fishing fleet remains vibrant here in Gig Harbor.
Yeah, absolutely. And in fact, we, this alternative A, we lost at least one, if not two more slips because we did hear from the commercial fishing operators that their vessels are wider and longer than previous vessels. And so that's where you can see in many of these slips, though it is kind of small, that we are spacing the finger floats fifty feet apart. We had those narrowed down even more. And when the fishing, commercial fishing operators told us that they needed more room, we widened these berths and lost some room. So again, if there's a layout, maybe the layout has the float system coming directly perpendicular to the Anseach pier. And so there, and at one, if you recall, a while ago, we had angled piers coming off of, or angled finger floats coming off the pier. That would allow you to have some different ways of coming in and out of your float system or the pier itself and the finger float. So we did look at those. And based on the input that we received, this is what we came up with. Councilmember Abersold.
Yes, thank you, Jeff. On that additional parking that I think you said was on Novak Street, is that correct? Would we be able to restrict that in any way as far as just the people who are utilizing these commercial docks? Or would it be open to the public for anyone who's like, if I want to go down to Suzanne's Deli, can I park there? Or is there going to be any kind of restrictions on that?
There would not be any restrictions on that, so we'd have to be cautious about that. That's, this is the same approach we took when we, as part of the Harborview Stinson Intersection Project. We're adding four new parallel parking stalls. One of the main reasons we're adding those is to accommodate for the community recall change at the Edenboat Brick House. And so it's not, we can't, the city, we can't say that those are only going to be used for what we determine. They are just generally open to the public, but it's a mitigation for additional impacts to the site.
Thank you.
Councilmember Franch.
I can't raise my hand, but Bob Heinz is right here.
Did you call on me, Jeff?
I called on you, Jim. Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Is that, could you go back to the slide that shows alternative A?
And Councilmember Heinz will get to you in just a minute.
So that that does, that was one of my questions. That does represent wider birthing areas.
It it does. It was intended to, based on the input we received, yes.
Well, yeah, that's absolutely correct. The the when they were 20 feet out, that was not adequate. So does this um, go to the outer harbor line?
It does for the vessel itself. On this one, if you can see vessel 10, we have a measurement estimated at 1.8 feet. The stern of the vessel is 1.8 feet off the outer harbor line.
Okay, uh, thank you. And just just to you know, parking was discussed at length and I'm not going to dredge up all of the past discussions that were had about this whole facility. But uh, just to speak to the parking on Novak. Right now, I I wouldn't expect that that's going to be a a huge benefit or it's not like there's a lot of open parking places there right now that that is being used right now from for various reasons, just whether it's neighbors, whether it's people coming to downtown. So it's not like that's unused at this point in time. And um, so it's not new parking.
Right. And I apologize if I said new or unused. I I meant to say underutilized. And the way, the reason I say it's underutilized is because if somebody's parallel parking through there, they might get three or four cars in there. We anticipate with back in Angle Park, we can get eight or nine. So we'll get more. Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, uh, couple of things. One, the factors that you had in here included occupancy rates, but I couldn't find them anywhere in terms of what the assumption really was. Particularly on both, well, both on the fishing vessel side and on the July boating side.
Councilmember Heinz, the very last part of your statement cut out, but maybe Steve, Robert, are you available to answer that?
Yes, I I I heard I heard him cut out as well. So councilmember Heinz, I think your question was like, what is the mortgage rate being used in the analysis? Is that right?
Well, yeah, the the occupancy rate. What percentage of these things are actually occupied during these periods of time?
We took that into great account. We heard the fishermen say that we we took in our fleet questionnaire. We had a follow up questionnaire just to the fishermen. We asked them, how many vessels do you have in the harbor? How many vessels are actually there? What months of the year? They filled out a table for us like a calendar. So we have data from upwards of 20 vessels all throughout the year and did our our mortgage calculations based on that occupancy. So that's about all I could say right now, but but it is in that the economic analysis of this report.
Okay, it's it's somewhere in the 194 pages I've got here.
Yeah, it's it's in there.
By the way, I got to about 132. So
Yeah.
Okay, I'll take a likewise for the for the the summer mortgage. You've got your assumption in there for the occupancy rate for those recreational vehicles or recreational boats.
Occupancy for recreational boats. Actually, well, this might be an interesting point. I mean, we heard from those that we interviewed, the fishermen and the community that that this marina was to prioritize the fishermen. Um, I mean, a a big assumption of this of this report is that yachts don't come in and and more here when they're not, when the fishermen are out.
Okay, but I'm I'm just talking about average mortal size boats, like a 31 foot Catalina, to be more exact.
I mean, Jeff, I don't want to say anything that's that's out of turn here, but I mean, the the facility doesn't assume that the transients come in and take take fishermen slips.
Oh, okay.
And I think, yeah, I think that's a that's a policy decision that the the city is going to have to determine. The focus here was just on trying to determine what is layout and accommodations would need to be made for commercial fishing vessels. But you're you're absolutely right, Councilmember Heinz. That's something that we we can and should consider. But the report now wasn't necessarily focused on trying to determine what that additional benefit might be, or if the city wants to open it to recreational vessels.
Okay, so the so the revenue in table 11 on page 32, that revenue is only coming from fishing.
Absolutely. Yeah, we we specifically excluded any recreational transient revenue.
Okay, okay, great. Understand.
Uh, councilmember Rodenberg.
As I have a couple of things. Firstly, I think, and probably most importantly is I wanted to echo Councilwoman Denson's comment about when we really do get down to a final design and layout, absolutely, we should engage the commercial fishermen. And because I I recall seeing drawings that had numerous more boats than what I'm looking at now. So I I think their ideas and their experience would really be helpful. Secondly, Mr. Robert, you you say you kind of intersperse. We got comments from the community with, we got comments from the interviewees. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the interviewees were not necessarily a cross section of the community, but they were six or seven neighbors to the project. So we should make that clear. It's not really, in my opinion, a a community input. It's more neighbors. And secondly, seemed to slip my mind. I'll come back to it when I remember it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Abersole, you had your hand raised again? No, okay, okay. Uh, councilmember Franch.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, so in in the in the table, Mr. Robert, that you you calculated the the fees, was that based on the assumption that the commercial fishermen are paying 12 months out of the year?
Uh, no, not assuming they're paying 12 months out of the year, based on the occupancy I just described.
Okay, well, I I I I know that you, in your report, you had referenced a lot of other communities that have home port, so to speak. And in it's it's my understanding that that in most of the jurisdictions that have mores for commercial fishing, that the boats that sign up for those slips, whether or not they're tied up there or not, they pay every month.
Understood, understood. That's that's a nuance that we can examine, like we were just talking about transient. Fishermen paying 100% transients, taking some of that. We can refine that, but this is the scope of the of the report that was given.
Thank you.
Okay, councilmember Rodenberg. Oh, you're muted, councilman.
I remember what it was. We talked about the linear dock being more historically correct. And I'm not, I've heard a lot of controversy about that being right or not. It seems to me that things I've seen throughout the years don't necessarily reflect that. I think that when we get around to talking to the commercial fishermen, we should ask them their perspective on which is really more historically correct.
Okay, thank you. Absolutely. Well, we we can do that. I think the intent of the historic use of the linear mortgage was just by looking around Gig Harbor today. When you look around Gig Harbor, almost every float system where there's commercial fishing vessels, if not every float system, has linear mortgage. And while you're right, absolutely right, many other harbors throughout the west coast have float systems that have finger floats for commercial fishermen. Yes, they do. It's just we were talking about historical respective to Gig Harbor itself. Councilmember Heinz.
Uh, yeah, again, I'm back on page 32 with the table 11, which is the the one of extreme interest. If if I understand the two data points correctly, the bigger we build this facility, based on the assumptions you've got here, the more money the city loses.
The larger facility was shown to be a bigger cost sink for the city. Um, I don't know that we could say that we could directly correlate facility size beyond that, but the larger was more costly.
Okay, okay. So we e- even if they're the same, and then roughly you could say it's the same. But we're putting out about $400,000 more in terms of initial investment to get essentially the same net cost at the end of the day. And I'm talking 3% to 3% and 7% to 7%. Look at those numbers. Okay. Okay, so we take more risk in terms of our investment.
Absolutely.
Get about the same, the same payback.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, okay. Not the way you normally run a business. The other item is the the sensitivity. Was there any sensitivity work done to some of these parameters? Or did you just pick specific points? In other words, you've got a occupancy rate, a mortgage and a mortgage rate and series of other things. Was there any work done in terms of a band around that to look at how sensitive the results, results are in terms of net present value to these various parameters?
Yes, the the mortgage value was a was very closely researched, many adjacent facilities. I mean, we took we took inflation into account year over year. I mean, yeah, I mean, they're not just, they're not just random data points, if that's what you mean.
No, no, I I was just talking in terms of just looking at, is there anything in here that really drives this thing big time in terms of the net present value? Okay.
Okay, I think I understand your question.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm familiar. Usually we pick a a a most probable point, our most probable value. And then we go plus or minus on either side of that, just to see what the sensitivity is to that particular parameter.
I have to take that away. I mean, yes, there is one. I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm prepared to talk about it right now.
Okay, okay. And and the reason I say that is normally we we would say, wow, if that's the one, then that's the one we ought to really focus on. And if this is a priority list, for example, is it the cost? Is it the revenue? Is it the occupancy rate? What is it? There's a bunch of things in here.
Right, yeah. Good question.
Okay, uh, let's see. I think yeah, I think that's it for me. By the way, this is the the most thorough feasibility study I've seen, at least in my three years here. So, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Franch.
I didn't know my hand was still up. I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, councilmember Abersole.
Yes, Jeff, I'm just looking at Google Earth right now. And I'm looking at finger float docks versus the linear docks. And I I, you know, maybe I'm not an expert on this, but I feel that I've seen a lot more finger docks or yeah, the finger style docks than I am linear. Unless you exclude, of course, the opposite side of the harbor, which in that case, there are a lot more linear docks, very any figure floats there. But on our side, the the city side.
I mean, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was I was referring to mortgage facilities for commercial fishing vessels only, not for recreational vessels.
Right, I was saying the historic aspect of things.
Right. So historically, what you see in the harbor, commercial fishing vessels tend to war to linear floats and not floats with fingers on them in Gig Harbor.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, councilmember Denson.
Yeah, just real quick, since we were talking about um, cost benefit analysis. I see that the payback to this is going beyond just the mortgage fees and and our break even point for our investment. To me, the payback is not just those mortgage fees. It's it's also the draw that our fishing boats have to our downtown area. That's people coming downtown to eat in our restaurants and shop in our shops. It's also visitors from out of town that'll come and and go to our hotels and motels and go to the other commerce areas in the city. I take all of that into consideration as well. And you'll get Harbor for a long time has so wonderfully been known is not just another rich harbor with, you know, a bunch of white boats out there. People come here because they want to see those authentic fishing boats. You know, we're known for that. And that's why having a healthy fleet here is so important. And I do think that there is, there is a key number of boats that we need to have in our harbor to maintain our identity as a real maritime city and and keep that as a draw. So when people come down to Ansich Park, they can see the fishing boats at work. They can see the activity. That's really exciting. I know I've had discussions with the downtown farmers market and some of these commercial fishermen that, you know, maybe someday we have a fish market seasonal, which would just be so cool and a real draw to this area. So I just want to make sure we're not looking at the numbers as just our investment and the mortgage payback. It goes way beyond that for the city. It's so important. Thank you.
Councilmember Heinz.
Yeah, not to start the debate early, but I I thought the same way as councilmember Denson, until I came to the horrible realization that the docks will be empty during the two prime tourist months, July and August. So I I think that effect may be less than we think it is.
And and to be clear, I mean, based on what the comment councilmember Denson just made also, the the scope of this study did not take, intended to not take into account all of the ancillary revenues that councilment tourism and everything else that council member Denson made. That that is definitely something to take into consideration, but the they DCG and their consultants were not tasked with estimating how much additional revenues might come in from the ancillary draw from tourism and
Yeah, we call that indirect benefit that was excluded. Yep.
Okay, councilmember Rodenberg. I'm sorry, you're muted, councilmember Rodenberg.
Another benefit that I haven't heard anyone speak to is that fishing vessels, they incur about at least 30 times more expenditures in maintenance and repair than do a similarly sized pleasure vessel. So I know that when they come back from wherever they've been fishing, they work on their boats. And they they buy these products that they need to repair the boats with or maintain the boats locally. So if for every boat that you have additional, you've got a lot of money coming into the local economy other than tourists. I haven't heard anybody address that.
But but again, this this study did not have a scope to bring calculate those costs and that revenue. But you're right, there is additional revenues that are coming in because of those additional expenditures those fishermen make here in our town. Mayor Kuhn.
Actually, they did talk about some of that in the study, and they actually found out that a lot of boats do in the study, and they actually found out that a lot of boats do do more their boat other places where they actually can maintain their boats and work on them, and Accourtes with some, or Townsend with some, California with some. A lot of the mortgage was actually where people went, where they could actually work on it. And many fishermen actually mentioned that there was not, there was not machine shops and facilities tied in Gig Harbor for them to be able to actually work on their boats, and they actually went a lot of other places. So they actually did ask a lot of those questions, Councilmember. If you, if you read into the study and the answers from some of the questions from the fishermen.
And I'm sorry, that's a good point, Mayor, that the fishermen did note that I I don't recall seeing BST associates or DCG having able to summarize as what the, what those revenues are associated with, but you're right, that that is an accurate statement. Okay, Councilmember French.
Yeah, I, the, the, the actual revenue from repairing of the boats and maintenance on the boats, I think is, is for, it's absolutely way less than it was thirty years ago. There is no haulout facilities for Saners in Gig Harbor now. Most of the, the, any of the ancillary costs that that could be attributed, I believe, to the commercial fishermen would maybe be buying the groceries that they buy before they leave, maybe some odds and ends, but the I I don't believe at this point in time in the history of Gig Harbor, there's a lot of ancillary revenues that come in from maintenance of the commercial fishing fleet. And just, I, I, I didn't know what form this, this meeting was going to take today, but just to, since it's been talked about now, revenues from this facility. I, I somewhat feel as Councilman Denson that this, it's important to maintain for the city to spend some money on a mortgage facility to help bolster the history of Gig Harbor. And the more I've been thinking about this, and I was pretty interested to see the, the letter from Mr. Anderson today in in relation to his comments on pleasure boats using this facility and impacts to the neighborhoods as far as having recreational boaters use this facility. I I'm becoming more and more convinced that it is not appropriate to have recreational boats be using this facility due to its location in a mostly residential neighborhood. And I witnessed the effects and the noise that's associated with transient mortgage at Jersey's Park in the summertime. And there's a lot of, there's some amount of drinking that goes on, and it becomes, becomes very loud. And sound travels quite a bit on the water, so I I can see a very detrimental impact to the neighborhood by having recreational boaters be using this facility in the summertime, coming back to their boats at all hours of the night. Could be quite a disruption to the community, and I would almost view it as a takings in effect, because when you have that kind of activity going on in a residential area, it is detracting from the quiet enjoyment that the residents should be able to expect in their neighborhood. So I I'm, I'm starting to look at this, I'm not looking to make money on this. I'm looking to try and preserve the heritage of the local fishing community. I'm not looking to bring boats here from Tacoma or Bellingham or anywhere else. I'm looking more at trying to honor the historical families that were a big part of making this community what it is.
Councilmember Eversole.
Yes, so I guess my question is, is do we have like a commercial versus a residential zone for the waterfront? And I'm not talking about the land, but the the actual water area?
I don't think so. It would be best to be answered by probably one of our planners or Ms. Knutson. I, but I don't recall, the shoreline has the designation, but and the zoning and land use does, but I don't think there's an actual designation that we have in the open water.
Okay, just my concern would be, you know, I walk at night down by the post office, and if there's one boat out there with their radio on at eleven o'clock at night and people are singing Bon Jovi, you can hear them all the way up there. Especially when there's really not a lot of traffic on the streets. And I would hate to think of that, you know, and that's kind of, I would assume down by the tide's tavern or somewhere out in that area, just by judging by the sounds coming from. But having, and I guess, you know, the whole harbor is just an echo chamber, but if I were a resident, I wouldn't want that in front of my house, I don't think. Although I do, you know, I do believe in tourism and you know, definitely see the benefit of having boaters come to our town. But I would think that we would need to set some kind of boundaries for, for that, because I could see that being a real issue.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember French. Okay, Councilmember Denson.
So real quick follow-up, Councilmember Heinz made a good point that the docks would be empty during the summer because most of the, the men and women are out fishing. But then I was thinking that that's actually kind of a benefit, because the shoulder season, you know, our fall, winter, icky weather time, like right now, is when we really need to bring tourists in. And so if this is a draw for folks during that shoulder season, it's something I know our tourism department is always working on, then that's actually kind of a positive. And then for parking wise, it's also a positive, because in the summer months, those parking spots are being taken up by, you know, all of our folks downtown going to the restaurants and and shops. Whereas if the fishing families with their boats are there mostly, you know, in the off season, in the fall, winter, early spring, they would be utilizing the available parking spots that are way more available, for example, right now than they are in the summer. So it almost fits perfectly, and I completely understand the comments Councilmember Frenish and Eversole made about the transitory mortgage, and I thank them for their, their insights on that, because I always thought, oh, what a great way to make some more money back for the city. But hearing their comments and Mr. Anderson's comments today about safety, I would be okay with not having the transitory mortgage and just letting the fishermen, from what I understand, at a lot of places right now, they, they can rent month to month, but then they get a deal to rent by the year. And so most of them choose to do that anyway, and that's, to me, probably the way to go.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember French, did you have a question?
Oh, yeah, just, just a kind of a follow-up comment on that. You know, it's, it's, Gig Harbor is well-known as a commercial fishing place, and I believe people come here to see that, but no matter whether or not all of the commercial fishing boats are tied up at the Ansich Park, or whether it is the way they are now, where they're, some are tied up at the Bucis Dock, some are at the Ansich Tarbocha Dock, some are at the Lovre Ridge Dock, some are at the Blair Dock. It's dispersed out, so people that, that want to come and visit the harbor to witness the, the, the commercial fishing boats, doesn't really matter where they're at, they're, they're dispersed throughout this whole, at least this end of the harbor, so. I I don't think it's imperative that they all be in tied up at one location to, in order for that to be a draw.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments from council for either Mr. Robert or myself, at this point, I'd like to suggest we move on to item C, the comments from the stakeholders and the participants in the study. If that's, that's okay, okay. So I would ask that any of the attendees who are also stakeholders in the study, if they, I know some of you have provided comments already to city council, and maybe that's all you wanted to provide right now. If there's any of you who want to also provide verbal comments to the council or have questions of Mr. Robert at this point, to please raise your hand using the, your hand raising function at the bottom of your screen. Or, and Mayor, maybe I can ask for your reminder of how to raise your hand if you're on a phone, is, I forget if it's star six or star nine.
It's either, and and that sounds great, that's the, this is the time to do it. I see the list of callers, and so it's either star six or star nine. You can also raise your hand if you want, and then I believe Josh can unmute you. Yes, so at this time, I'm going to ask Councilmember Frenish his, his question, but at this time, if, if the public wants, at the, some of the people that weighed in on the study, if they'd like to raise their hand or do what Jeff said, that would be great. Councilmember Frenish.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I, I think that there could be some possible people that may not have been able to be on the phone, so I would just like to request that at the end of the, this public comment period, that I believe that you might have received a few emails that people would have liked to have had read into the record.
Right, thank you.
We did receive a few, we did receive a few emails. I think we only received one email from, actually, one of the stake, oh, sorry, two, we received two emails from stakeholders. I think that was, uh, Leedon Stanton, Ansich, and also Guy Hoppin and Greg Lovre Ridge provided a combined statement.
Right, and I believe Carolyn Berg had submitted a comment today that I know she wants read into the record, so, thank you.
Right, and one thing I, I have explained in the past, even at last Monday night's council meeting, is big decisions are, are hard to do in a pandemic, in a crisis, so that's why we're not trying to decide anything tonight. It probably is not very adequately fair to the public, to our citizens, so we're just letting Jeff and the consultant tell you the the recommendations and the results of the study. So last chance, is there anyone, any of the attendees, I see their names there that would like to raise their hand or push star nine or star six? And again, if for some reason it doesn't work, this is one, another reason why we're not, we're not doing anything tonight, but, but giving the consultant's report. Okay, there's Nick Babic, and then after that will be Leaf Domski. Who's the one that has the ability to unmute them? Is it Josh?
Mayor, I've just unmuted, asked Nick to unmute himself, and I will, when he's completed, I will contact Leaf.
Okay, and, okay, that sounds good, and, you know, we're not going to keep you to three minutes, but please try to do something similar to that. But go ahead, go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'd really like to thank Councilwoman Denson and Councilman Rodenber. I think they could speak, I wasn't too sure before, but they spoke very eloquently for a lot of the issues that we have, and I think that a lot of the stuff with the historic dock, I guess, is I guess a lot of fishermen, we don't want to be considered historic, because that's something that's we're still participating in, historic means like you're done, so. I think that historically, individuals owned those docks, and they put a linear dock, because that's all they had, but as you can see, for proper mortgage, we do have slips right now, and and earlier it said that the fishermen were against yacht mortgage, I think Mr. Heim said that, but we weren't, so that was up to the city to decide. I, I can understand the noise issues, but that's something that the fishermen were not against. We did not want this just for ourselves and, and not anybody else, so. But that's a decision for the, for others to make. And I think another issue we've talked about boatwork, you know, the only boatwork we, we have to do, Mr. Frenish, that is actually haul our boats out, because we can't paint the bottoms in the harbor, but at the moment, I'm in the harbor rebuilding two boats, and and it's, we're spending money around here, so I wish I wasn't, but that's something we have to do, and it's a lot easier to spend money here than drive somewhere else, so. We are still rebuilding boats here, and I guess once again, without taking too much time, but I'd really like to thank Councilwoman Denson, so I think she spoke, spoke for a lot of us fishermen, thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, I'm probably going to say her own leaf, Domski.
Leaf Dobzinski.
Thank you.
Yeah. I am one of the guys on the list that did the feasibility, I guess, questionnaire, and I have a vessel and would like to have mortgage down here, so I fall in that group. Right now, I drive, you know, two hours to do boatwork, and it's, I guess, it's just easier for a person to run a small business and, you know, maintain your other responsibilities, whether they be family or, you know, other volunteer opportunities you do. If your business is located close to your home, and we, we chose to live here because of the fishing fleet that's already intact and some other family, distant family reasons, but you know, just, I guess, kind of some of my thoughts is that a public option will forever cement the fishing as a career path for the youth of Gig Harbor, you know, the next generation, where, you know, eventually, you know, it's not going to happen tomorrow, but, you know, slowly, slowly the private waterfront gets brought up, gets bought up, and, you know, most of us aren't in the position to afford that, so. And then I'll just, you know, echo Nick's comments about lots of boatwork still goes on, guys go to Ace Hardware, Wilco, wherever, and buy stuff. Sure, larger items that are more expensive are bought from local retailers, mostly on the Tacoma side, but you know, the work's still done here, it's just not done out of the water here. And I don't know, that's about all I got for you guys, so, thank you.
Thank you. The one thing I am pleased is the, the old concrete dock that's fallen down near the Jerkovich Dock, you know, that, that will be able to be mitigated for the fishing dock, so whatever we, you know, so that's, that I think, I think that's great news, and so that should make this easier. With that, I'll turn it over, I don't see anyone else calling with that, I'll turn it back to Jeff to tell him then to talk about the next steps.
Sure, well, I just wanted to clarify, again, the, the council received multiple emails today with comments that were provided. I'm willing to read the two that were provided by stakeholders, if that's of interest. Otherwise, I would say just, they'll be entered in as, and provided as, as comment. I'm just looking for some direction on that, otherwise I'll just jump right into the next steps.
I, since council has it, why don't we, you know, we'll, we'll have, they'll have other opportunities as well, council does have that. So unless there's, unless there's objection from council, which they may, you can tell the next steps. Councilmember Frenish.
Well, I think that they're very short statements, I don't see any reason why they can't be read in a very short amount of time.
Well, one's four pages.
Yeah. Oh, well. So I'll, 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 I'll read them, I'll go ahead and read them, I'll try and read them clearly and quickly. I'm going to start with the message from Leedon Stanton dated today, topic is home port at Ansich Park. And here's her statement. Like to restate my support for constructing commercial fishing mortgage at Ansich Park. My work to preserve the fleet began in 2010 and includes meetings with state representatives and the fishermen's club in order to fund the maritime pier. Additionally, and before I left the city, I wrote the heritage grant that funded preservation of the Ansich net shed with the express purpose of adding commercial fishing mortgage as a next phase of the project. But it is important to remember that Ansich Park planning changed, and is it is now obligated to serve kayak, club members and their families, residents of Gig Harbor and their visiting families, and the general public. Since every site has a capacity, the challenge will be the city's responsibility to ensure that there is adequate access, circulation, and parking for all users. If the city exceeds the limits of the site, then everyone loses. A linear float works. It offers flexibility. Rafting can double capacity, preserves more open space for the paddling, rowing, and boating public, is consistent with linear mortgage facilities for commercial fishing vessels from California to Alaska, and is easier to permit and construct. Fishing is not going away. Please build a linear float for our local fleet and put it on the top of your capital improvements list for 2021. Thank you for your consideration. Okay, now, the next statement is four pages. It is from Guy Hoppin and Greg Lovravich. So let's see, I know there's quite a bit. I'm going to read the introductory statement and and then I'll go from there. I'll try to try to be as brief as possible here. Okay, this is titled Fisherman Advocate Feedback Analysis of the Feasibility Study for the Commercial Fishing Home Port at Ansich Park, dated January 12, 2021, from Guy Hoppin and Greg Lovravich. The feasibility study had several hundred pages of content, 34 of which were summarized the study. We hope you'll take the time to review the four pages we offer as feedback. Gig Harbor's 150-year commercial fishing presence is at risk. Few argue that commercial fishing has and continues to anchor our authentic community waterfront. Gig Harbor is the last community on the North American West Coast relying on private property for commercial fishing vessel mortgage. Private mortgage facilities that fishermen have relied on for mortgage continue to change hands. We are at a crossroads. We either act now to secure useful commercial fishing mortgage on Gig Harbor's waterfront or participate in a process that assures that when the last commercial fishing family dock disappears, so will a way of life that defines Gig Harbor, erasing a community's legacy, culture, and identity. The fish, the feasibility study methodology was broken at the onset. The city's careful selection of the interviewee group all but assured the study's outcome. Introduction on page one. The following feasibility study statements phrases in the study's introduction reveal a fatal disconnect. Consultants DGG, DCG, and Anchor interviewed members of the local fishing fleet and park neighbors, 13 people, as directed by the city, to build community consensus and to evaluate the community's conflicts. This conflict suggests that a small and carefully selected carefully selected interview group represents community is repeated throughout this study. The views of all but one interviewee were well known at the city. We contend that the preponderance feedback from a group handpicked by the city, missing at large community members and other stakeholders as the resolution 949 process relied on, was designed to affect the outcome of feasibility study for commercial fishing at home port at Ansich Park. I'm going to continue to read a little further, but I have to say that there's a lot of quotes, parentheses, and others editing that was provided in this that make it a little harder to read. Feasibility decision criteria arose based on input from various stakeholders, e.g., the 13 selected interviewees. Design criteria, page 15, as applied to figure 13 and 14, alternative A full buildout, and alternative E linear facility. Criteria, table three and four, pages 14 and 15, conformance to historic working waterfront. The linear style dock does not define the historic working waterfront. The feasibility study claims that a linear style dock is cohesive with the city's history of linear mortgage. That decision criteria finding is incorrect. The consultants could have easily discovered this fact had they researched historic photos. There is no historically definitive type commercial fishing vessel mortgage in Gig Harbor. Linear style docks appeared off some net sheds in the 1960s and 1970s. For well over half a century until the 1960s and 70s, Gig Harbor's commercial fishing vessels relied on a vaulting potpourri of mortgage, including anchoring, tying to a piling at the end of net sheds, mooring at the Conan Fuel Deepwater Pier, tying to a barge, more standard family dock, and tying to piling off the Scansy Net Shed. Linear floats do not singularly define historic fishing vessel mortgage at Gig Harbor's commercial fishing fleet. Those private floats were simply a later iteration of fishing vessel mortgage options. Criteria definition, table three and four, pages 14, maintaining the view, maintain the view corridor. Maintaining the view corridor towards East Gig Harbor does not maintain in any way the character of the working waterfront. It is not historic working waterfront district preferred use. It is unclear why the consultant included maintain the view corridor in a conformance to historic working waterfront category. Sacrificing commercial fishing and working waterfront for views is antithetical to preserving commercial fishing mortgage and fishermen and historic working waterfront in Gig Harbor. Please note that at least 90 feet of open space between the Jerkovich kayak facility and the home port facility is assured by DNR's maneuvering requirements. This consolidation of kayak facility in Jerkovich will likely make the view corridor even greater. If commercial fishing advocates were asked, were asking for a true full buildout, it would be rotating the home port main stem 90 degrees, thereby reducing DNR's requirements in the view and the view corridor. We have, we have not and are not asking for an actual full buildout. Criteria, table three and four, pages 14 and 15, net cost. The study's disadvantage message is the city will have to subsidize the facility. How is financing a public facility, no matter its use, considered a disadvantage if it's what a community desires? Funding a community need is a reality, not a disadvantage. The feasibility study criteria also calls out cost versus revenue as an issue. It is not at all clear why consultants apply this criteria to the home port, especially in light of revenue generating capacity of a future facility. A home port will generate mortgage fees of at least $100,000 a year, indirectly contribute to the local economy as few other water dependent uses can, and has been identified through public process and city plans as a vital community need. No other city uses are subject to this criteria, even uses at the same site. The study claims as a foregone conclusion and a disadvantage that the city alone will have to subsidize the total cost of building the mortgage facility. We believe that there may well be partners or grantors willing to contribute. Criteria, table three and four, pages 14 and 15, mortgage capacity. Home port advocates do not understand how and why alternative A full buildout becomes the largest facility the city can commit to constructing, table two, page 13. Feasibility full buildout details 700 feet of mortgage space with an additional 180 foot designated for skiff onlys and for a total of under 900 linear feet of usable mortgage, depending on what skips only refers to. It is completely unclear to us how this explicit yet subjective city consultant alternative arrived as a feasibility mandate for a buildout. Fishermen support a home port facility of a modest 1,300 to 1,400 feet of mortgage capability, a facility that appears on city documents. A mortgage facility that does not blanket the site that is capable of serving a fleet of 20 vessels, give or take, and that assures the view corridor. The inferred feasibility study claim, table five, page 16, that rafting is a solution to expanding alternative E's linear floats capability, thereby becoming a serviceable and as a large facility is less than ideal. Few, if any, mortgage facilities cater to rafting, especially for the size of vessels found in Gig Harbor fleet. Few mariners, commercial or recreational, want to raft out. To design a facility from the onset that plans on rafting to meet mortgage requirements is a mistake. It should also be noted that neither alternative A full buildout North Fisherman's preferred 1,300 foot to 1,400 foot facility maximized the available mortgage area at the Ansich site, as the feasibility study prefers, table five, page 16. Criteria, table three and four, page 14 and 15, regulatory compliance. Regulatory compliance is a fact of over the water, overwater development. It should not deter development of a facility that meets the needs of a Gig Harbor commercial fishing mortgage facility. City staff has stated that it is feasible to mitigate this project. Now that the human powered craft facility is downsizing its overwater needs, that may allow for the commercial fishing mortgage facility to utilize some of the mitigation previously earmarked for that project. Criteria, table three and four, pages 14 and 15, traffic and parking. Commercial fishing facilities are exempt from parking requirements. The exact same historic working waterfront has area has supported 20 or more fishing vessels in the past. The Ansich site is in historic working waterfront, HWW zoning district, has a preferred use of commercial fishing services/mortgage. The Ansich site is historic commercial fishing property. Impacts from traffic and parking from unscheduled commercial fishing users are difficult, at best, to quantify and largely non-existent in the busy summer months. It appears the feasibility study has determined that commercial fishermen that have had an ongoing historic presence in the historic working waterfront district for decades are and that are the least likely users to have parking and traffic impacts should somehow be targeted for a bare responsibility for the sum total of potential district in parking and traffic impacts and problems. Criteria, tables three and four, page 14 and 15, on water safety. Feasibility study claims that alternative A poses safety concerns to human powered craft. This is subjective and misleading claim. The reality is that fishing vessels are moving at a slow bell, entering or departing a mooring facility, regardless of fishing footprint. Sorry, regardless of facility footprint, fishing vessel operators and human powered craft operators need to remain vigilant in the restricted area between facilities when vessels are maneuvering. We see little distinction between any of the facilities, A, E, or the fishermen's preferred facility, when it comes to safety. The areas between facilities, at least 90 feet of open water, and the nature of ingress and egress for fishing vessels is sufficient to mitigate any safety concerns, as both fishermen and kayak club officials have repeatedly asserted. Okay, I'm going to skip this last page. It lists of many vessel operators that support the home port. And I would just ask that it's the last page for for on the document. So I would ask that the council just review that. It's also let to can be provided as a public document.
Okay, there's two more that came in.
Right, but those weren't stakeholders. So I wasn't going to read those.
Got it. Got it. Okay, sounds good.
But but those could be included in the in the the next steps that I'm going to be talking about here. So the next.
Thank you for that, Jeff.
You're welcome, Councilmember Franch. Councilmember Rodenberg. I think you're still muted, Councilmember Rodenberg.
I had a question about the last paragraph you read, having to do with on water safety. The sentence is, we see little distinction between any of the facilities, A, E, or the fishermen's preferred facility when it comes to safety. The preferred facility, is that drawing we don't have in this presentation?
Correct. We don't. We don't have that either. That's the one that we were talking, discussing earlier, that the fishermen said that there was, I think, the number that was being used are 1,300 to 1,400 linear feet of available mortgage if they reorient the. I don't have that layout in front of me.
Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Wook.
Yeah, I guess that was sort of my same question, because as I understand, alternative A is on page 31 is 875 feet, mortgage feet. And the the fishermen would like to have between 1,300 and 1,400 mortgage feet. And and I sure would like to see what that would look like. Are we going to do anything to show what that would look like?
I I would be very curious. It I'd be very curious to have this fisherman provide us with a sketch of what that would led a scaled sketch of what that would look like. So I guess I can reach out and ask for that if the council wants me to find that out. That's one of the topics in the next step. I just want to be cautious about. Should the council look at the study and want to revisit some of this? We have far expended DCG's contract already, and they're here on their own dime, helping us with this tonight. We need to reconsider if we need to extend or amend their contract to continue to look at other alternatives or or and also provide for the allowance of additional public input if we change the study at all, really at all, from what we have drafted here tonight. So if counsel like, I can definitely reach out to the commercial fishermen and ask them for that sketch of what they're proposing to obtain 1,300 to 1,400 linear for your mortgage.
I would like to see that.
I would as well.
I see quite a few thumbs up. Okay, Councilmember Franch. Councilmember Franch, you're muted. Sorry.
You're muted, Councilmember Franch.
Yeah, I would have no problem wanting to take a look at that. But I don't think that we need to unless until we get to this, the I'm interested with Jeff's next steps are until we hear those and get this before us in a more at a formal council meeting. I don't see any need to extend the contract with DCG.
Okay, all right. So I'll just jump into next steps. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're looking to have council consider this report at a future council meeting, ideally, as Mayor Kuhn has said, at a time when we can gather collectively. But if it can't wait that long, we could meet as early as February or March to get public input and then see if council is willing to adopt or not the study that we have before us tonight. Just a reminder, what we have currently in the budget for 2021, we have two objectives related to this site, and specifically related to the commercial fishing home port site in Parks Development Fund, objective 11. We have the commercial fishing home port conceptual design at $30,000 to provide a conceptual design and permitting summary and project cost estimate for this facility. And then we have under that same Parks Development Fund, objective 12, Jerkovich Pier Advanced Mitigation. That's the one that Mayor Kuhn was referencing, that we're looking to remove the dilapidated Jerkovich Pier and use that for future mitigation for the commercial fishing home port boat system. So that's already in the 2021 budget. If we proceed with those two, and we, the next steps would be to proceed with final design and permitting, which will probably take us into 2022 and 2023, and then actual construction of the dock and the associated parking that will likely take us into 2023 and 2024. And so at this point, that's the end of my presentation. I'd be happy to hear any further feedback, and then we can be done. The Councilmember Wook.
Yes, I'd also like to see some figures on mortgage rates for the summertime, so we can compare what we would be, what the city would be getting mortgage rates during the nine months of the year, I guess, as opposed to not having anything in the summer, in the summertime, or if the fishermen pay all year round. I would like to see some of those numbers as well. Thank you.
I believe.
Thanks for this presentation.
I believe they're already in the study. Is that isn't that correct? If we if we were going to have mortgage when the fishing boats were gone, I believe Steve provided costs of what the tourists would bear. Isn't that correct?
It provide those rates.
Yeah.
We did not take that into the net revenue the city could expect from the alternatives.
Great.
Sorry.
No, that sounds great. So they are, Councilmember Wook, since council's not sure, some council wants that, some council doesn't. It's good that we have the we have the rates there in the study. It's good that we have the we have the rates there in the study. Do you want more than that?
So the rates are there. Would they be the same? Am I looking at the rates? Is that on page 30? Is that where that would be, Steve?
Yes.
Okay, and then the summer rates, that would be the rates all year round, right? This is the one for the different marinas? Okay, maybe this is on page 31.
Yeah, the transient recreational rates that provide on page 31 is essentially what we're charging at Jerisich Dock, as noted there.
And that would be the same rate we'd be charging at the summer rates we'd be charging at Ansich as well then?
Well, the council gets to decide that, but that would be my recommendation just for ease of use.
All right, thank you. That's information that I I wanted. Then nothing else is needed, I don't think. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'd like to I'd like to thank Steve Roberts for his hard work with his staff. I know, again, it sounds like you're doing this as a courtesy today, so I counsel myself appreciate that. The citizens appreciate it. And, you know, one reason why we used you is you were very familiar with this site. So we appreciate it. And I'd like to thank Jeff. And and even though she's not here, I'd like to thank Nicole because Nicole worked really hard on this with Steve from our Parks Department.
Thank you, Mayor. We've really enjoyed working on this site for the past six years and really hope that it becomes what the city wants it to be.
Thank you. Six years. That's that's a long time. So thank you. And I'm glad you're safe, Steve. I see that plastic shield behind you to separate the the different rooms, I guess. So so that's good. All right. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it. And when do you, when did you, did you say when you proposed this going back to a council?
Well, if it if it's not looking like we can meet in a public, then I would say we we consider either the last meeting in February or look into March, depending on what availability is and and what information we get back. Yeah.
Right. And it would be great if there's a way that, yeah, we can. It's hard when a lot of people can't call it when, you know, we obviously got a lot more packed house on on major things when the city hall was open. So we want to be, we want to be sensitive to a lot of people can't make these Zoom meetings for one reason or another. So. All right. Well, thank you. And I appreciate, thank you all council members. And if there's no other burning questions, we will conclude this study session. Okay, thank you all very much. It's a study session, so we don't have to vote to end it. So thank you all very much. And I'm sure we'll be talking to you shortly.